We welcome you all here tonight. We have a full, full audience and kind of excited about it. It looks like NCHS is here in force tonight and I think we're going to start with their recognitions and celebrations. Principal Wilson, are you around? There he is.
Chairman Christopherson, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hensley, thanks for having us here tonight. The first of our two teams that we're going to recognize, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Coach Sondag in just a minute, is our 2025 Girls Outdoor State Track Championship Team. So I think we have seven or eight girls with us tonight who represented that team last year in the spring semester, or in the spring season. So I want to thank Coach Sondag and her staff. The, the end result is a, is a culmination of her staff and these kids working really hard to just get better, every day get better, and it showed at that state meet last year. So great job, girls. And I'm going to turn it over to Coach Sondag and she's going to give you some specifics and introduce the girls.
All right. First off, thank you for having us and for celebrating with us. That means a lot. This lovely bunch of ladies behind you are fierce competitors. They won regionals and I knew we kind of had a shot. And the thing we talked about most was like having employees under pressure and boy, did they have it in spades. So really, really proud of each and every single one of them. And I think I'm going to make each of them just sit down and just name and what they did at the state meet real fast. All right. Because you guys want to know them, not me.
Yeah, we do.
And also a shout out, Coach Clear is in the back there hiding and he was very instrumental to all the great things that we did. Yeah, Coach Clear, you're going to need to come up here for a second. Just a little bit about him. He himself ran in the Olympics, has an Olympic medal, knows a little something, something. And it turns out when you have a guy who knows a little something, something, really good things happen. Our relays, which he was at the helm of, were really kind of, I would say, maybe the, the star of the show. We had two first place finishes and two second places in the relays. So our relays were incredibly strong. All right, girls. So I think we'll just start over here. You sit. What did you do? What was your event? A little bit. Okay.
I'm Oakley Yeager and I high jumped at the state meet.
I'm Kim Joseph and I did long jump, triple jump, and the 100 at the state meet.
I am Ella Reese and I long jumped and triple jumped at the state meet.
Get a little closer to the microphone for us, would you?
I'm Sarah Lester and I ran the open 400 and the sprint medley relay.
I'm Arden Smith and I ran the open 400, the open 200, the sprint medley, and the four by four.
I'm Jasmine Sharkey. I threw shot and disc at the state meet.
I'm Alina Briggs-Brumman and I pole vaulted at the state meet.
I'm Erin Onnie and I triple jumped and pole vaulted at the state meet.
I'm Brooke Russell and I did the four by eight and the 800 in the state meet.
I'm Bristol Craig and I high jumped and I did the 200 and the 100 at the state meet.
Thank you. Thank you, girls. The next team, excuse me, that we're here to recognize is our FFA meet judging team. Last year in October of 2024, this team qualified for, with their finish at the national competition for an international competition. So I'd like to introduce and thank Timmy Reynolds Ellingson. She's our head FFA advisor, her assistant Bert Andreen. We have countless volunteers that work with our FFA kids and I want to thank them. We also have Heath Hornicker here who was specifically involved with this meet judging team. These kids in FFA are extremely dedicated. Many of them spend hours at their own house taking care of animals and doing chores. They also play sports, participate in other activities. Oftentimes, the top of our students and I just want to recognize the, the work that they put in as a whole. So I want to rec, uh, introduce Timmy Reynolds and she will bring up the, I don't know, the world champion? Team, I think, is what we have here tonight. So please welcome our FFA.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay. As Mister Wilson mentioned, my name is Timmy Reynolds. I am the ag teacher and FFA advisor at NC and I'm honored here to be here tonight to recognize the Casper FFA livestock evaluation team. Each member of this team has been committed to livestock judging from a very young age. Some of them starting at eight, some of them starting earlier. And their years of dedication led them to placing fourth in the livestock evaluation contest at the National FFA Convention last October. Now, that success earned them the opportunity of a lifetime. An invitation to spend two weeks judging livestock in Scotland and Ireland over the summer. But judging livestock overseas was a whole new challenge. Instead of the livestock breeds that they had grown up evaluating, they were forced to, or they were forced, they were faced with, my bad. They were faced with breeds that they had never seen before. And not only were the breeds different, but the standards of evaluation shifted as well. While American judging often emphasizes growth efficiency and carcass quality, European judging places a greater value on hardiness, maternal ability, and how well the animals thrive in their pasture-based systems. Even the contest procedures required some adjustments with new evaluation processes and scoring systems. Despite these challenges, this team excelled. They gained valuable experience at the Royal Highland Show in Scotland where they judged native livestock breeds and worked with the members of the Young Farmers Association, which is Scotland's version of FFA. And with their new knowledge, the team went on to place as the highest-scoring team at the Charleville Livestock Show in Ireland. Their willingness to learn and their drive to win paid off. Representing the team here tonight is Emmy Hornicker, Maddie Dickinson, and Carter Cox. And their, uh, their coach Heath Hornicker, who played an instrumental role in this success. And then the fourth member of this team who unfortunately couldn't be here because he's in school in Kansas is Garrett Burkett. These students not only represented our FFA chapter and NC with excellence, but also our district, the state of Wyoming, and the United States on an international stage. I couldn't be more proud of their dedication, adaptability, and their success. And I thank you all for having them here tonight to recognize this achievement.
That's always the best part of the meeting, isn't it? I would take a motion to set the agenda.
Can I add to the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
Uh, we've been working on a resolution and I would like to put it on the agenda to talk about it a little bit more and hopefully vote on it. Is that what I say? I don't know.
Yeah, that's a motion.
I make a motion to add it and work on it some more?
I guess we don't discuss it much here, it's just whether we put it on the agenda or not. So all those willing to put it on the agenda? Opposed? Unopposed? Anything else needs to go on the agenda tonight? Believe, Mary, do you? We have to have major maintenance on. Do you want to make that motion?
I didn't realize that. Uh, I move, or I motion to put the major maintenance request on the agenda.
Need a second? All those in favor? Animus to me, so those two have been added to the agenda. Will be. As we speak, we are, we are missing some employees tonight and so we. So now we move down the agenda to persons requesting to address the board. So I want to read this tonight because we have a lot of people here. So now is the time for public comment. This is a limited public forum portion of our meeting. This is a public meeting in which the Board of Trustees does business. We must have orderly contact and conduct in this meeting in order for our business to get done properly. Therefore, we ask that you be respectful to commentators, to come, no applause or comments. Do not shout out during any portion of this meeting. I know people are passionate about certain points of view, but we must have orderly conduct at all time in our meetings, please. Remember to state your name and address when you come up. You will have three minutes to provide a comment and we're pretty strict on that, so don't ask for more. So go ahead and come on up and.
Good evening. My name is Ross Schriftman, 2200 Mariposa Casper. I appreciate the efforts of the two trustees who drafted the documents and the discussion that the trustees just had. My preference is for the more robust resolution, which describes the reasons why we celebrate, but some of that has been added. Our Declaration of Independence acknowledged that our rights come from God and that the most important principle of our founding is that our government would be designed not to give us rights, but to protect those natural rights that all humanity has and that they need to be protected. As the Declaration of Independence set the framework, the U.S. Constitution put those principles into law. The Constitution was adopted on September 17th, 1787. It included the Bill of Rights, the Ten Amendments, that enumerate those rights. They were ratified by the states on December 15th, 1791. Frederick Douglass called on all Americans of his time to honor those rights that each of us, regardless of background, are entitled to. He called on Americans to live up to the principles established by our founders. The education of the district's students should include lessons on how we overcame the challenges during each part of our history to make a more perfect union and how we continue to do, to strive to do, all, always to do better. There are so many inspiring examples throughout our history and a focus on the sacrifices of our founders should be a key part of this effort. One inspiration is the history and meaning of the Inspiration on the Liberty Bill, which is taken from the Book of Leviticus in the Torah, the Old Testament. Proclaim liberty throughout the land and to all the inhabitants thereof. Its meaning is an ancient call to end slavery and was taken up by abolitionists in our nation long before the Civil War. Our students need to learn about this uplifting part of our history. As we enter 2026, I encourage the district leadership to reach out to citizens in our community who have personal experiences and backgrounds and ask them to share those experiences with our young people that honor the principles of our nation so that our students can be inspired to achieve great things in their lives.
Thank you, Mr. Schriftman.
Good evening. My name is Linda Bergeron and my address is 2355 South Larkspur in Casper. I would just like to speak to, not able to hear me?
Yeah, get closer to that mic.
Okay. I'd just like to speak to the upcoming 250th anniversary of our Declaration of Independence and the great heritage that that brings with it. And I just would like to plead with you all to take that great heritage and show our young people what a magnificent heritage that we have. I would like to support the resolution as written, not changed so, so that the public is not aware of the changes. I just am very thankful for the heritage that we have as a, I taught the 5,000 Year Leap, which is the 28 principles of the Constitution. And we have such a rich heritage. We have rights that are protected. And we kind of slid away from our great heritage, but we can see with the current administration that he's working diligently hard to bring that back. There is a, or was today, a forum that was talking about, I know about it because I follow First Liberty. They were talking about our school system and how important it is that we get back to the importance of our founding. And as I understand it, President Trump attended that. And I can send you links to that if you're interested. But I just plead with you that we take this wonderful opportunity, 250 years of great heritage that we have and that we pass this to this year of education for our children. I, I think it's vitally important and I, I just can't stress that enough. I know that when my granddaughter was in school, the Constitution was only taught in the fifth grade and then a couple other times and that was only for a week. I think we owe more than that to our children. So I'm just asking you all to vote yes on the declaration and the resolution as written. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bergeron.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Lean, Representative for House District 38. I live in Neptuna County. I have a couple of concerns that I want to come before the board with this evening. The first one is, is this board and the school district helping its employees to willfully neglect the laws that went into place July 1 around compelled speech, defining what men and women are and what restrooms they're using in the public schools? You have an elementary school where you have a custodian that is dressing as a woman. There's not a law against that, but my question is, what restroom is this individual using? Is it what he's dressing as or is it what he is as a male? I know you can't talk about personnel matters at the board, but I want to make a statement here that there are laws that have been passed and if this district is going to willfully neglect them, there are consequences for that. I'm not afraid to come before you and say, hey, what's going on? I know that Representative, or that Superintendent Hensley has had great conversations with me. I've come and asked about the wage increases and what happened there. She was happy to have a private conversation with me and we got to the bottom of that. I have a better understanding of what's going on within our district and I'm grateful that she took time out of her busy schedule to visit with me. This may be another one of those situations. In addition to that, I'd like to also offer to the board in a public meeting setting. There was a recently in the Wyoming public media, a press release about the OWL ECO program, OWL ECO. It is a safety program that works with Raptor for our first responders to have an inside look at what's going on during an active shooter situation. This is of no charge to any district that implements it. I'm here to fight for the, for the students and the staff and the first responders of Neptuna County to be able to have this one extra layer of security. I'm not sure where, in the email correspondence that I've had, there was a mention of a fee after it was implemented and that's not true. And I, I've asked for documentation on where that came from. I've checked with the creators of the program and I know that this comes free to every district that puts it in place. Again, it's complimentary to Raptor. It's a, it gives a first inside look for EMS when they're responding to know what locations they're at and what they're walking into. So those are the first, those are the things that I wanted to come before you this evening and say, thank you for what you're doing. And I just have a couple of questions about what's going on at Crest Hill. And if we can get some inside knowledge on what's going on with OWL and how it would help, how it would help with the Raptor program and your multi-layered security system. I think it would be really important for our first responders to have that look. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lean. We'll be getting back to you with your answers. Anybody else would like to address the board tonight?
Hi, everyone. I'm Jaiela Sutherland. I live here in Casper. As we begin the school year, I want to talk about bullying, especially cyberbullying. Both are already a major concern here in Casper and our parents have no business making it worse. In general, one out of every five students reports being bullied at school. In a recent study, 100% of students reported experiencing, witnessing, or being aware of acts of bullying in a single school year. Among high school students, LGBTQ plus students are nearly twice as likely to be bullied at school or online. Bullying harms self-esteem, academics, mental health, familial relationships, and overall health and safety for individuals who experience it. Thank you to the district for responding professionally to the online bullying that took place the first week of the school year and for supporting your staff. The district's visible support goes beyond the individuals who are directly involved in any specific situation because these incidents reverberate across the entire district. Incidents like these cause fear and isolation for staff, parents, and students as many wonder if the same thing could happen to them. That is not conducive to a thriving and healthy learning and working environment. Youth, families, and staff need to know that bullying, harassment, and discrimination of students or those who support them are not tolerated in this district. We need to model to our youth how to react when we are uncertain and/or curious and how to lean into curiosity and away from judgment. Everyone is different and throughout our lives, we will always be surrounded by others who are different from us. That's not what makes the world scary. It's what makes it beautiful. When we treat others with kindness, we are modeling to our children and other adults the same behaviors. I ask all who are here in this room against bullying and discrimination and who support kindness and empathy to please stand while I read the following. We support a school system where students and employees feel safe and supported in being their true selves. We support a school system where it is understood that anyone can be a bully, parents, staff, and students alike, and that bullying will not be supported or condoned at any time from anyone. We support a school environment where curiosity is cherished and difference is celebrated, not feared or villainized. To the staff and students in Neptuna County, please know you are supported by this community. There are so many of us who are here to say you belong, you are welcome, and we have your back. You can reach out to us through Casper Pride, the Yellow Dots, or CUSP and we will be there for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
Hello. My name is Robyn Spiva and I wanted to come address all of you this evening. After hearing all of the public comments, I think your two first speakers were discussing a resolution that encompasses what you've just heard. These are connected issues. I think you recognize that. Culture is an effort to provide a coherent set of answers to the existential questions that all people face throughout the course of our lives. The beginning of our Declaration of Independence says that we're endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights and among those are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We are valued equally in one way. It is not in our intellect or our stature or our look or our gender. It is how we are viewed and valued through the eyes of God, which is where our freedoms come from. We want kindness. We want peace and loving people in our society and in our communities. We want children that don't kill each other. We want them to understand that life is sacred and valuable. You can't get this if you water down our founding identity. You will not get this if you don't recognize where we came from. People died. People died because they knew what it was like when there was religious injustice, when there was tyranny. They understood that that wasn't fair or right. We have to do better than this. And we can't keep crying about the mistreatment of each other if we will not give any type of recognition to why it is we're supposed to treat each other well. The fact that we're in this building and that we are assembling and that you're sitting where you're sitting is supported by those documents. You should be wanting to celebrate them largely. You should want to understand the spirit that all of those things were written, in which all of those things were written. It's an important time in our history and you will go down in it. What side do you want to be on? I don't want to see children killing children. I don't want to see people killing people. Four years of a civil war was defeated with those documents. We have to do better than this. People want better than this. And if you listen closely, we are saying the same things, but we are not solving it the same way. But our founders solved this problem amongst themselves. We can do better. Let's do better.
Thank you, Ms. Spiva.
Thanks.
Anybody else like to come forward? Being none, we will close the forum and move on with our agenda here. Down to the consent agenda. Superintendent Hensley.
All right, there are four items for your consideration on the consent agenda tonight. Executive session minutes of August 25th, 2025, general session minutes of that same date, the certified and classified personnel report, and district bills of August 22nd and 29th.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chair Christopherson, I move to accept the consent agenda.
I second.
She beat you to it. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Being none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Animus, so we don't have to go. Reports and recommendations. I will turn this one over to you also.
All right, tonight we have one grant, a $100,000 grant from the Neptuna Collective Health Trust for our district to partner with J Foundation again this year in suicide prevention efforts and mental health.
I move approval.
Do I have a second? About, anybody want to talk about the J's Foundation? I myself didn't get a pair of boots.
You will this year.
If I go, right?
Yeah, it's coming up. It's starting. We are going to have the opportunity to volunteer because it takes one week at NC and one week at Kelly Walsh and then Midwest and Roosevelt go to those schools also and the seniors will pick their boots. So if you get a chance to look at the link, pick a day and sign up and go help these kids get their boots.
You want to give a little summary of what the J's Foundation is about?
Well, funny you should ask.
In the least words possible.
Okay. September also happens to be Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and so that's what the J's Foundation actually covers. The idea of the boots is that you wear them and you check in on somebody who you've been thinking about and then you also check in on yourself and how you're feeling and reach out when you need help. So it's a phenomenal program. Yeah, little as word as possible, right?
That's the truth.
I would like to add that I think one of the, the powers of the J Foundation and getting boots to all of our kiddos is that it tackles the hesitancy to admit that you're down or that you're... that you're struggling. And I have had some great conversations with football players and wrestlers about their boots, and about what it means to check in, and not typically your crew that would talk about their emotions, but I think that's where the power of this effort lies, is it gets all of them to say, do a boot check. So I'm very, very grateful for the Health Collective, for the donation, and for J's Foundation for bringing this to Casper and to Natrona County School District.
All right. Anybody have the guts to vote against this? All those in favor? Right, it's unanimous. So when we did the agenda addition, is that below here on other business? Is that where you put it? Okay. So we're going to do some reports now. We'll take from the academic steering first, and then the infrastructure.
Thank you, Chair Christopherson. Board Academic Steering met today to get some good news, and it was the information that we were actually recognized by the state in our improvements for the positions of our schools within the state. It's directly related to our goal one. And our goal is that by 2029, all schools will be meeting or exceeding expectations as checked by the Wyoming Accountability and Education Act. And this year, we actually were recognized separately as one of the most improving districts in the whole state, because we made that much progress, which was pretty cool. Today, we had Principal Jen Gray from Summit, Principal Stacy Moore from Evansville, and Principal Chris Caruth Britt from Pineview, who explained to us all the things that they are, that are happening in their schools. Those three schools were, so we have not meeting, partially meeting, meeting, and exceeding. Those three schools were exceeding. One school, Summit, had a perfect score. So we've, you know, we can see some definite progress. We had a review of the Wyoming Accountability and Education Act, which is kind of a complicated way to figure out what's, what's going on within our schools. There are several things that they look at. But when we looked at the designations of all, all the schools, one thing we want to do is, is celebrate them, and here are some of the things that we discovered. Fifteen of our schools increased their scores. Six stayed the same. Six went down. And then, but there were six that were like point one percentage point away from meeting. So we could have had a whole lot more. What you've got to realize is that even though some schools didn't quite reach meeting, and they're that close, there definitely is some improvement, even then. So we had three exceeding. We had 10 meeting. We had seven partially meeting, and we had seven not meeting. One of the things that we talked about was that it's very, very important for you to have a good leader in your schools. And they work very hard with our cabinet, and they work very hard with their, the principals with their teachers to focus in and do the very best they can to get the kids where they need to be. So I, for one, was very happy to see the improvements, and I look forward to there being more next year. We also talked a little bit about very specific things that they do within the schools, their focus, how they use their professional learning communities, and just actually how they trust each other in what they're working on. And apparently, that works. That's one of the things that works. So we didn't get to our civics discussion, because this took up the whole time. But is, is there anybody that would, thinks I missed anything, would want to add?
The one thing I think might be appropriate, if we could have Superintendent, Associate Superintendent Rose come up and read that article, because it was, it was read in the...
In the meeting, yeah.
In the meeting, and it's, it's like a one-time, it's never happened before, and it's a celebration. I would like everybody out there to, to hear it, so.
Thank you, Chair Christopherson. And trustees, here you go. This was released on August 28th from the Wyoming Department of Education. As they released school scores, they had a specific paragraph about Natrona County schools. Natrona County School District Number One made significant gains in school performance. Included is Pineview Elementary, which moved from not meeting two years ago to meeting last year to exceeding expectations this year. In three years, Summit Elementary has moved from partially meeting to exceeding expectations. And Midwest K-12 has moved from not meeting to meeting. Additionally, Burnon Elementary had significant improvement this year, moving two rating levels from not meeting to meeting expectations in a single year. Together, these improvements reflect how the district is working diligently to achieve system-wide improvement.
Thank you very much for reading that for us. So we will go to the next one, and Trustee Schmidt, you have that for us?
We had a brief infrastructure meeting today. We started it out first with a tour of Kelly Walsh High School and the improvements that they have made over there over the past summer. The press box and the field at the, at the football stadium are completed as part of the KW Master Plan. The ramp and the soccer field building is progressing, and I'm assuming should be ready by spring. They, we did discuss the need for a dust collector at the woodshop at Pick. The original, or the one that is there, is not working to the, what the room needs. They need a larger one, and this machine or the dust collector needs to be updated. But we, as a infrastructure committee, decided to get more information before going ahead and approving a purchase of a new one. We want to make sure that we can't keep use of the one we have and add to it. So that is something that we'll discuss at the next infrastructure meeting when we get more information back. We did discuss multiple major maintenancees, which we have approved. So those are various things that each school needs to maintain itself. And we discussed future projects that will occur at NC. The pool sound system apparently is blowing out people's eardrums, so that needs to be fixed. The press box at the football is quite dated, and it needs to be updated, so that one is being looked at as well. And then the stadium seating. So those are things that we're going to be, those items will be brought to us in the future, so that we can decide whether we, how to move forward with them. And that's it.
Okay, I believe you need to bring forward the major maintenance projects.
I motion, motion to bring forward the major maintenance projects that we amended the agenda for.
All right, any discussion on those major maintenance projects? Saying none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Anamis, thank you. Now I need somebody to make a recommendation or a motion on this recommendation, resolution. That's what we're calling it now.
I make a motion that we bring forth this resolution.
Which resolution? The one that we passed out?
The one that we are, that we, well, here's my other question, because there's one other part I actually do want to add in there. Can I, can we do a little bit of work?
Yeah, we can work on it.
Yes, okay, fantastic. So this, I don't, I don't know what to say. It's you.
Okay. We have to vote whether we want to bring this forward.
But if we move it forward and second it, can we work on it and then vote on that? Right, okay. How do you, how do I do that? Yeah, after. A very, like, minute one. Well, that's not minute, but. No, yeah. Sorry.
So.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion. We worked on this, and there was one part that we, we added in quite a bit of the original resolution that I think was written by Trustee Schmidt, which I cannot state enough how much I did not want this to be like a her version versus her version. There's one part in here that says, whereas the sacrifice of countless Americans have preserved through trials, wars, and challenges, ensuring the United States remains a beacon of hope and opportunity. That's probably the only section that we didn't add in from the original one, and I actually like that a little bit selfishly, because I think that there's all of us in here who want to make this a place of, you know, of hope and opportunity for people who not only live here, but would like to live here one day. So I think that's a valuable piece that can be added back in there. I just, of course, took off patriots, soldiers, and citizens, only because I thought countless Americans pretty much sums it all up. We should all want hope and opportunity in America. So I would actually add that in there. I'm so sorry. Right, that's exactly what I'm looking at. I want, I know what I want to add. I just want to add it in right at the bottom of the, with the American story is one of resilience, where generations have stood to defend the ideals that bind us together: freedom, liberty, and the right of every citizen to determine their own life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Whereas the sacrifices of countless Americans have preserved these ideals through trials, wars, and challenges, ensuring the United States remains a beacon of hope and opportunity.
We don't have a second here.
So tell me what I should say in my ear. Yep, so I want to, I would, I would like it to say, whereas the sacrifices of countless Americans have preserved these ideals through trials, wars, and challenges, ensuring the United States remains a beacon of hope and opportunity. Yep. Yep. Yes, that's my motion.
Yeah, we would need a second for that. I don't know, we have a discussion on it.
Okay.
The only thing I would say is, there's an art, and I'm not in possession of it, of saying something in few words that has great meaning, right?
Right.
Anybody can write a novel.
Right.
That doesn't say anything, but saying something short and sweet. And I, I thought that's what we were trying to get to, is short and sweet, and just, so the more we add back, the more we might as well just do the original one, so.
Well.
That's, that's what I'm saying, so.
I see, but I think what we've added is powerful and short and sweet.
Okay. Jennifer?
Okay, so we're adding this shorter resolution? Okay.
We're adding it to this one that's up on the board.
And we added that third paragraph too earlier? No.
So this is kind of what we did in the session, right? And this is what is being presented? I just want to add that one little. Oh, thank you, Dana. Yes, that's perfect. That's exactly what I think they should include.
I just, I just don't want this to turn into like a meme, a quick and short, little meme for people. I just want it to be meaningful. And I guess for me personally, I have a child that's joining the military, and I don't want to cut short people who give their lives to this country and have given their lives to this country, the patriots and the soldiers and the citizens of the United States.
I mean, it's semantics, we can talk.
Trustee True.
Would it be possible to vote on the shorter version and then vote on adding? I like, as you had mentioned, I like the shorter, tighter resolution. So then the vote is on whether we add another paragraph.
Mm-hmm, that's what.
Add a page.
So all those, if no more discussion, all those in favor of adding this paragraph in, raise your hand. So we're putting that paragraph in. So I need to go back to another motion. Do we accept this as amended?
I make a motion to accept this as amended.
Okay, discussion on this. Trustee Schmidt.
I make one motion to amend it again?
Yes.
I would just like to add the fifth paragraph from the resolution that I presented, where it says, whereas the Natrona County School District Number One recognizes the vital role that education plays in preserving and transmitting the values, histories, and responsibilities of citizenships, citizenship. Our schools are entrusted with preparing students not merely for careers, but for this sacred task of sustaining liberty and strengthening our constitutional republic.
I like it. I just want to take some off. And at the very end.
Do I have a second? Point of order. You already have a motion and a second.
Oh, no, we pass that one.
We pass that one. We, we added this, I know, but I, I thought, trustee.
I'm amending.
Five.
Six.
Oh, six, I guess, yeah.
Just add it right after that?
I'll second it, so we can have some discussion. Oh, did you make that motion?
I made a motion to amend with that paragraph. Second in it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, can we talk about it now, because I've seconded it? Okay, sorry.
Just a minute, we're having a legal discussion up here.
Sorry.
That's where America's come to, legal. All right, trustee Schmidt?
I just, I know we're all, or some of us are very concerned about the length. I think we're still under a page. But I think it's important that we don't minimize it for the sake of less words. I don't think asking school employees to read a page or a page and a quarter is asking a lot. A resolution like this, I think should, should, should be substantiate, substantive, I can't say the word, be important and include everything. I will admit, I'm not 100% behind this, but adding some of these does make it a little bit more palatable. Because I think it really does, it's starting to outline the significance of the Declaration of Independence, which is what we are celebrating, and that's the important part.
Trustee True, Will's.
I appreciate that trustee Schmidt has brought this to our attention and that we are doing something. The la, the paragraph that has just been added is the reason of the resolution, so we're like double saying it. And I don't think it needs to be said, I mean, that is the point of the resolution. I'm for tighter language.
Okay, all those for adding this, please signify with the right hand. Right, and it does not get added. Now we're back to. We haven't voted on it. Or do we? So any other proposals here? If not, this is passed.
Have to wait.
I don't think we voted on it yet. Oh, that's right. Did we vote? She made, she made a motion, but did we vote before she made a motion? Let's re-vote.
Great.
On, on the way it's written right now, they added in. All right, somebody make a motion on what's up on the board.
I move that we.
I know, but we're, we're. We're being careful. Going to do it again.
I was going to say, but let Jennifer read it real fast, or anybody who needs to read it out fully how it is.
Would you like to read it out?
Okay.
All right, you read it.
A resolution by the Natrona County School District Number One Board of Trustees, supporting the celebration of the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Whereas, the United States of America will commemorate its 250th anniversary of independence on July 4th, 2026, marking a historic milestone in the nation's enduring commitment to freedom, liberty, and self-governance. Whereas, the Declaration of Independence, adopted in 1776, boldly affirmed that all are created equal, endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, including life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas, the American story is one of resilience, where generations have stood to defend the ideals that bind us together. Freedom, liberty, liberty and the right of every citizen to determine their own life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Whereas, the sacrifice of countless Americans have preserved these ideals through trials, wars, and challenges, ensuring the United States remains a beacon of hope and opportunity. Now, therefore, be it declared by the governing body of Natrona County School District Number One, that the district proudly joins in the national observation of the 250th anniversary of the United States of America. The district supports the development of and participation in initiatives by the schools, their staff, and their students. This resolution serves as a celebration for the continued freedom, liberty, and self-governance of our republic, which depends on informed, engaged, educated, and responsible citizens.
Thank you.
I think it's pretty powerful. Yeah, I was going to say, I like it.
I like it. So, I need a motion, we're going to start over with this?
Okay, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
You just read. Who seconded it? Dana. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, we move on. So we have one more report on, uh, Wyoming School Board Association. Bunch of stuff got added.
Thank you Chair Christopherson. Last Wednesday, five of us, Superintendent Hensley, trustees Howie, Petrino, Bo, Bolander, and myself had the great privilege to attend a district meeting of various school board members and some school district executives, led by the WSBA Executive Director Brian Farmer and his talented team members Julie Kusorick and Nick Belik. We had a great time getting to know each other, rekindle old acquaintances and friendships, and share our celebrations and challenges. I might have more to say later, I know that comes as a surprise, but for now, I will turn the comments over to my esteemed colleagues for their impressions. Trustee Howie, would you begin?
Yes, I will, if my voice will hold out here. This is my third, maybe fourth time going to this regional meeting, and I, I do like getting to talk to the other people in the other districts in our region. Most of the school districts are smaller than ours, but one thing I discovered was that even though we have some of the same problems and some different problems, we definitely have a shared goal to do the best we can to take care of our kids. And there was no question about that, listening to everybody talk. The other thing I was interested, there were several things I was interested in, but one of the things I was interested in was, I think it was their Craig Report, that kind of shows a prediction of how our finances are going to go over the next couple of years. And I looked at all the graphs and things, and I've got to tell you, it's a little bit scary between the tax cuts and decreased coal royalties. Plus, the infrastructure that we have to deal with throughout the state, to the point that it showed that our actual found, school foundation money could be actually in the hole in a couple of years. So, I'm hoping that everybody takes, takes that to heart. It's only a prediction, but there were some pretty interesting numbers to look at, so, food for thought. Actually, it kind of kept me up all night, that night, so.
Thank you trustee Howie. Trustee Bolander?
Yeah, okay. I, I agree with everything that trustee Howie just said. Having the interactions with other board members from, you know, other, other counties was important, and, and we had got to, you know, see, okay, well, we have this problem, we both have this problem, and then, no, some, some of our problems are different. But it was so, you know, kind of a discussion of so many similar situations. And there, there was, the main speaker was Brian Farmer, and he was just amazing with all of his knowledge and his desire to draw all of the school board members in the state together. And, and it's not just the state, he actually travels to many, many states. And, and, but that's what he does, he brings, brings people together. And there was one other thing I wanted to mention, that we had the best bus driver ever.
Thank you Superintendent Hensley. And we had a very good trip and a very good exchange of ideas. Thank you trustee Bolander.
In, in this region, but the one piece that really struck, struck, stuck out to me, excuse me, was a little bit of history that was shared with us about the founding of our state, actually. And John Hoyt, and my parent, I don't have all my notes on this, but John Hoyt was the first president of the University of Wyoming. And he was a major part of taking Wyoming from a territory to a state. And so, his focus when helping write the Wyoming Constitution was first and foremost prioritizing public education, making sure that was enshrined in the Wyoming Constitution. So he was largely, largely responsible for Article VII in the Wyoming Constitution. So, our state was quite literally founded on the ideals of public education. And looking forward, that being paramount to the success of our state, and I felt like that was pretty powerful, even in the 1800s, having somebody say, we aren't a state yet, but we need to prioritize public education and make sure that is solidified within our constitution going forward. So, I thought that was a very cool piece of history and something I'm really interested to learn more about.
Thank you trustee Petrino. And for anybody out there who's interested, the WSBA has put out a special publication called The Legal History of Wyoming's School Finance System. So if there's anything about it that you might want to learn, you're going to find it in there. And of course, it's so much better to speak about it from a position of information rather than ignorance. So I recommend that one. And my final comment regarding this, regarding the WSBA Chair Christopherson is to let everyone know the mission. The mission of the Wyoming School Board Association is to educate, support, and inspire school board members to strengthen public education for all Wyoming students. Those conclude my remarks, thank you for the opportunity.
Let me see, did you add anything else to the agenda? Was it? It's not on mine. Hey, I'll believe you. Oh, there it is. Hiding right on top. All right, we're down to trustee comments.
Donations.
No, we are at donations. Man, this has been a long night, long day, we started at 12 o'clock, I think, so.
We started early.
12:30, so, let's talk about some donations.
Sure, so as always, we would like to express our appreciation for the following donations. Qdoba donated burritos of about $750 worth of value to NCHS students to celebrate the first day of school. And JNC Investments donated $800 to the Midwest Football Program. Thank you to all those who donate to the district, we appreciate it.
Yeah, now we're down to trustee comments. I will start down here with trustee Schmidt.
It has been a long day, I agree. I would like to congratulate NC's track team for winning, being state champions, that is a wonderful accomplishment. I know how proud the parents are of those kids, I'm a proud parent of state champion skiers as well, so I know the, the time and effort that each parent puts into their child and their efforts in sports, and so congratulations to all of you. Congratulations to the FFA for going over to Scotland and Ireland, I believe it was, both countries, and learning an entire new system. It's a, it's a fascinating thing, being in FFA and having to learn how livestock are judged and how they're processed and the, the whole, the whole kit and caboodle. And I commend you all for working hard and accomplishing such a lofty goal that you did. As far as the resolution, yes, it was me who brought it to the committee last, the last board meeting. And I thank all of my fellow board members for working on this. It is a, we had two, we had the resolution that I put together, and we had a proclamation resolution that Kyla put together. And we kind of addressed that in a shortened amount of time prior to this meeting. And I know I voted against it, not to slight any of my fellow trustees for their vote, but out of principle and out of my research on the Declaration of Independence, I couldn't vote for it, for a couple reasons. One, the Declaration of Independence set the tone and was the moral guidance of how our country was going to proceed from that point on, when they, when they wrote it and when they voted on it. There's elements of it that are in the Constitution, and, and it's referenced by many of our founding fathers. And so, to not include the forming of our moral and philosophical bedrock, to me is principally I couldn't accept. The other part, not acknowledging the patriots. I mean, when we think about the Declaration of Independence, our citizens, our patriots at that time was a very small percentage in this nation, or in this, in the 13 colonies. And they went up against the British Empire, which was massive at the time. They had trained soldiers, they had control of everything in this nation, the, the sea ways, the, the money, everything. And for them to declare their independence from them and to go up against them with a very small percentage, that's a huge, huge thing. It's, it's equal to Martin Luther King standing before the fire and the police saying, no, we're not going to stand for this discrimination. It is one of those moments of our history that we have to acknowledge the significance. It goes well beyond just the United States, it goes, it goes through the world history. And so it's an important part that I just can't ignore and have that taken out. The other part, not only, we also took out not only our borders, but the ideals that bind us together, stood to defend our borders. There were 27 grievances listed in the Declaration of Independence. Of, one of those was the fact that we wanted to control our borders, we wanted to control our 13 colonies, we wanted to control our seashore, we wanted our own money, we wanted our own post office, which was done. All of those things were controlling our country, our destination. So to say, to take that out, that's a significant part of the declaration and the history of it. So those are things that, on principle, I just couldn't, and I hope that no one takes offense to that. I support a resolution, I support the celebration of this country. So much so, that I have decided, as best as I can in my research throughout the year, in my trustee comments, I'm going to read little tips of history about the Declaration of Independence and events that led up to it. If anything, for my own self-knowledge, it's great to read it and understand it as an adult. I am a homeschool mom, and one of the benefits of it is, I get to relearn everything that I didn't pay attention fully when I was in school. This is one of those moments, I can share it with my children, I can learn it myself, and I'm happy to share it with all of you that care to listen. So I thank everybody for their hard work and effort today. My no vote was just a principled vote, and that was, that's why I did it. So I still encourage our district to celebrate every moment possible that they can, the declaration and the formation of this country. Thank you.
Trustee Howie? Eebo. It's been way too long, I'm going to die. Stedali, that's right. I know who you are. You. She passed.
Now, I can't speak for anyone else, but I really love the celebrations that we enjoy at the beginnings of our meetings, and then the great celebrations we hear about the wonderful education taking place in the Natrona County School District. It is good to celebrate the great things happening in our school district as we look forward to ways to make other things even better. As our meeting began this evening, we heard of the great accomplishments of the Natrona County High School Girls Track Team and the Natrona County High School FFA Livestock Judging Team. On a side note, if anybody wants to know more about parliamentary procedure, talk to the FFA Parliamentary Procedure Team, and you'll learn a heck of a lot, because they are great. Well done, young people, well done indeed. And thank you too, for all of you who chose to take part in public comments, either as speakers or those who stood in support of a speaker's message. speakers or those who stood in support of a speaker's message. Once again, the First Amendment at work, thank goodness we have. As others have said, we had great committee meetings that take place before the regular trustee meetings, and these are certainly open to the public. We welcome those who wish to attend, thank you for those who were able to come and attend them today. And today, we had the distinct pleasure of listening to the presentations from the Infrastructure and Steering Committees. The educational professionals that work for us in these areas are incredibly gifted and talented, and we owe them both our recognition and continued support. And finally, I thank all of the people here who helped us reach a resolution supported by a majority of the board. Thank you trustees Smith and Albie for giving us this wonderful opportunity. I hope that we can serve as an example to other boards around the state and that they adopt similar proclamations and resolutions.
Thank you trustee Petrino. Yep, you're next.
Thank you for all for being here tonight. We have the coolest students and staff, and I'm just so wildly impressed and proud of everyone. I'm gonna read more off my notes tonight than I usually do, so I apologize. Tonight, I'm very proud to share that our district is accepting a $100,000 grant dedicated to strengthening mental health efforts for our students. This is an important investment in the well-being of our schools, one that'll allow us to expand resources, build stronger support systems, and make sure that every student knows they are not alone when they are struggling. It is especially meaningful today that this announcement falls on September 8th, known as 9/8 Day. This day serves as a reminder of the critical role the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline that plays in saving lives and offering hope. By dialing 988, anyone experiencing a mental health or substance use crisis, or anyone supporting a loved one, can be immediately connected to train support 24/7. Earlier today, I had the privilege of attending Governor Gordon's proclamation signing ceremony, declaring September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in Wyoming. This action demonstrates a statewide commitment to breaking stigma, raising awareness, and uniting communities in the effort to save lives. We are grateful for this leadership, which underscores the importance of the work being done in schools across our state. And I'm gonna read the proclamation now. Whereas Wyoming has one of the highest, the nation's highest suicide rates per capita, and whereas Wyoming's suicide rate in 2023 was 26.7 suicides per 100,000 residents, higher than the national average of 14.7 per 100,000. And whereas each death takes an overwhelming toll on families, friends, and communities, whereas Wyoming's 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline services are available 24/7 through Wyoming-based centers, more than 89% of Wyoming calls, chats, and texts are answered by Wyoming centers. And whereas Wyoming continues to strengthen its 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline offerings through improving available call, chat, and text services. And whereas partners across the state continue to spread messages of hope and help, to empower people to speak up when they are not okay, to train individuals to recognize and respond to warning signs of suicide, and to support communities in the event of suicide loss. Whereas, the ongoing collaborative efforts among all branches of government, counties, municipalities, and tribal partners will continue to strengthen suicide prevention efforts. Governor Gordon signed it and said, "In Wyoming, and encourage all residents to recognize that suicide is preventable, seek training and resources for suicide prevention, and engage in honest conversations about mental health and the importance of seeking help. Further, I remind residents at 911 to call 911 if they are someone they know is in immediate danger of harming themselves. Otherwise, I encourage people to call or text 988 to connect with the care and support offered by the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline during a mental health or substance use crisis." Wyoming has already lost two students to suicide this year. And I believe as a school district, we are all committed to making sure our students, staff, and families know about these resources and feel empowered to reach out when they need help. Mental health is health, and together with this grant and support with, of initiatives like 988 in our state and the governor's collective commitment, we can continue building safer, more compassionate schools and communities.
Thank you trustee Howie.
Pretty cool. Trustee Petrino. I like that. It's, it's a very important thing. I'd like to congratulate the Girls Track Team also, and the FFA, and I'm with Mr. Stidelli, I like celebrations a lot. And so, that's one reason I was so happy to see how well we are doing with our students, improving their academic excellence. And I was thinking about the idea that this is a really hard assignment that our school district has, that all the school districts have. Because for one thing, our raw material is all different. There are so many different things that kids have to cope with, that kids live through that we may or may not know about. Just so many variables, and it takes an awful lot to be able to do an improvement like our district did this year. But we have more to do, we always will have more to do. We work on school improvement. But one of the biggest things that I think is that we love our kids, and so we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that they have all the help they can, and I was really inspired listening to our three principals today talking about all that. So, that's where my head is, and as far as I'm concerned, it's been a really good day. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Hopkins.
I also like to congratulate the NCHS Girls Track Team and the NCHS FFA Livestock Evaluation Team. I also want to congratulate Evansville, Pine View, and Summit in their improvements. I hope that in the future, that all of our schools, we can see improvement, the ones that are challenged right now. I wanted to also speak on the Owl Echo Program, I did get a chance to go see that, it's really impressive. I was able to ask a lot of questions, and it seems like something that could work for our, our district, and I hope our administration can look more into that. Let's see here. Oh, about the resolution, why I did not vote for it, I felt like it was gutted, I just, I feel really strongly about the first one that trustee Schmidt had proposed, and it seemed to encapsulate everything that was important about our country. So, this is the reason why I voted against the amended one. And one other thing that I, it wasn't put in here, but I would hope that our teachers may focus on our children's citizenship here and teach them more about bills, how to contact their legislation, their voting rights, and becoming more engaged in the ongoing workings of our nation. And let's see here, yep, that's all I got tonight, thank you for all you coming and speaking tonight.
Thank you trustee Bolander.
Thank you. I also, I can't stop, I can't not mention the NCHS Girls Track Team and the NCHS FFA Livestock Evaluation Team, congratulations to them, it's so wonderful to, to start a meeting like that and see all those wonderful students. And I also want to speak briefly about this, the Steering Committee meeting that we had. I'm always, when we meet, I'm always so impressed with the knowledge, compassion, and commitment of, of the staff members that are there, the cabinet and the, and the others. So, anyway, thank you very much for that, and of course, thank you all for coming, we need to hear from you, and, and we'd like that. But I also want to mention an ongoing concern we as a district are facing, is the one-year-old only policy. I am not aware of anyone on this board or in this cabinet that likes the idea of one-year-old only contracts. But after sitting on the board for about nine months, I've learned how complicated this is. With changing school populations, declining enrollment, and with students changing their desires to take particular courses, there is no way to predict everything that will need to be taught in terms, will be needed in terms of subject teachers for the next school year. Superintendent Hensley could explain this way better than I can, but we have so many wonderful, dedicated teachers that we don't want to lose. If we had unlimited funding, we could meet everyone's needs, but we don't. We are working to do our best with what we have, and we want you to know that. And finally, as this new school year gets underway, one of the things that I and some of the other trustees are looking forward to is getting out into the schools and visiting with administrators, teachers, staff, and students. So, looking forward to that, thank you.
Trustee TruWells.
Being at the end kind of has its benefits, everybody has said my comments, so no thoughts.
Thank you. Just wanna, little shout out to Fort Casper Academy, I got to go over there and do some cooking of the pancakes, and I spent, my wife and I spent about an hour and a half cooking hamburg, not pancakes, hamburgers. See, it's a late, late night, isn't it? So, I'm ready for bed, guys. Yeah, it's not even close, is it? Hamburgers and hot dogs? There was buns, that's close to a pancake. Lot of smoke, man. Anyway, yeah, I thank you to all the employees, I, you know, I raised in Casper, went through the school district, these people care, everybody up here cares deeply about these kids, and that's what it's all about, you know, and I just, I just thank God that I live in Casper, Wyoming, and in the United States of America, the greatest country that's ever been and ever will be, God bless America, thank you.
All right, well, I would like to thank all trustees and staff for all of your work today, it has been a long day, but very good work. Also, just like to thank our principals, our teachers, our staff, and our students for the excellent work they are doing in schools, so much so that we will have at least two of them here to celebrate every meeting between now and Christmas, basically. And so, we have a lot to celebrate here. Your next meeting will be September 22nd at 6 o'clock right here at Central Services.
We're adjourned.